I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the real power which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the March 6th Yumitila County Board of Commissioners meeting. I need to remind everyone that this that this meeting is being recorded and there is also a virtual option to join the meeting and testify online. If you have comments on items not on the agenda, please limit your time to three minutes. Please give your name and address so that we can have it on the record. Public comments will be at the beginning of the meeting before business items. Are there any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I have none.
Okay, well I do. We have four coin, challenge coin award winners. And I'm going to start with Lexi Hudger. Lexi is an outstanding nurse who truly cares for her patients. Her incredible attention to detail and works hard for our community. She has taken on the task of improving our HPV immunization rates in the county and does an amazing job of handling all things related to our tuberculosis program. She willingly takes on extra responsibilities in the office when needed and works hard to keep up to speed on current best healthcare practices. Over the last year, it has been an honor to work alongside and learn from such a dedicated R and D. I think I speak for my entire department when I say that we are lucky to have her on the team. I would like to present her with a challenge coin as a small token of our appreciation for her outstanding work. And this is from Lily Harris. So we'll make sure that she gets the coin. The next one is Kendra Stone. Kendra has worked very hard over these last few years, which has contributed to the success of the environmental health program. Her duties are mostly involved with the onsite septic system, which entails conducting site evaluations, issuing of permits, follow-up on complaints, and helping with the food pool and lodging program by conducting inspections for temporary restaurant events, RV parks, and restaurants. During Kendra's training as a trainee, she was able to accomplish one of the environmental health program goals. One of Kendra's achievements was passing the National Environmental Health Association exam. The exam covers many different areas of environmental health, which include knowledge about health concerns regarding food, drinking water, wastewater, radiation, soil, and air. This exam can be difficult to pass, however, this is one of the requirements in Oregon that all trainees must complete in order to become a fully registered environmental health specialist. I also want to recognize Kendra's contributions during the COVID-19 emergency. She often volunteered for roles in the drive-through events that were held in different locations around Yumitila County. Her participation didn't go unnoticed and helped with the overall success and smooth operation of the event. Because of the outstanding dedication and hard work, I would like to recognize Kendra for this award. I want to congratulate her for passing the exam and obtaining her license to keep up the great work. Byron Morris. We'll make sure that she gets this also. Okay, our next two can come on down. Gina Miller and Rich Estes. Yes, I'm happy. Okay. Stand over here so everybody can see your face as I read this. And this is from Bob Walder. I would like to recognize Gina Miller and Rich Estes from the code enforcement program for their outstanding work in facilitating the recent abatement of several nuisance properties in Yumitila County, in particular, the cleanup of a Bureau of Land Management, BLM, property near Lynn and Benzel Roads. This property had experienced a tremendous amount of illegal dumping of solid waste to numerous vehicles that were abandoned and the illegal occupation of at least seven RVs. Abatements of this size require a substantial amount of planning and coordination with agencies, especially since this property is under federal jurisdiction. Our team worked closely with BLM Ranger Stephanie Cox throughout the process. Stephanie expressed that she appreciated Officer Estes being present at the site through the course of their efforts. And she noted that he had gone out of his way to assist the federal team with local contacts and knowledge. She was also appreciative of the Yumitila County Sheriff's Office and patrol and probation staff who also assisted through these efforts. One of the most positive outcomes of this cleanup was the interactions with unsheltered individuals living on this property. Prior to this event, Gina and Rich have attended several meetings of various community-based organizations to present information about how the county's code enforcement program is working, not only to abate properties like this, to remove environmental and health concerns, but also look for ways we can work together with community-based organizations to provide resources to unhoused individuals who frequently occupy these nuanced properties. Because of Gina and Rich's leadership on this issue, a caseworker from CAPCO was also available at the BLM site throughout the cleanup to help connect some of the individuals living on the property with access to resources. Cleanups of this nature take a great deal of planning and resources. As I have shown in the attached before and after photos, this property is looking much better today. I would like to express my gratitude to Rich and Gina for their hard work on this issue and congratulate them for a job well done. Congratulations. Okay, approval of minutes from the previous meeting? Are there any additions to the agenda? Any public input or visitors? Okay, our first item, collection franchise fee. We are going, let's see, we're moving into a public hearing.
Good morning. This item before the board is the second reading for the collection franchise fee ordinance amendment. The first reading was held on February 7th, 2024. And at that point, it was the second reading scheduled for today. At this point, there will be a public hearing and following the public hearing, the ordinance is available for adoption.
Any comments? All right, seeing then, we will move out of the public hearing. The wishes of the board?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2024-02.
Second?
Did you want me to second that?
No. You can vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. STIF policy amendment?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Megan Dobchewski, Planning Division Manager. This action item for you today is regarding our STIF program's system sustainability policy. It was developed during the COVID-19 pandemic by our STIF advisory committee to develop a reserve fund and then means for transit dividers to access those funds. On February 7th, 2024, the Yumitila County Transportation Advisory Committee met and recommended approval of the proposed amendments to the policy. These changes include expanding the use of funds, placing additional requirements for funding, and clarifying some language in the policy itself.
Before I make a minute, a motion to adopt this, I do want to point out that Megan put a lot of work in this and there was a lot of coordination and things to Doug also on this, but a lot of work was done. So I would like to make a motion to adopt the amended STIF program.
Second? All in favor? Oh, any comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks again, Megan, for all the work.
Sheriff's Office camera purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Roberts, Criminal Division Lieutenant, Sheriff's Office. I first apologize because I'm a little congested this morning. So if you can't hear me, it's because I can't hear myself and let me know if I need to speak up. Before you on the first item here, I'm proud to announce that UCSO has received a federal grant through the Small Rural and Tribal Bodywarm Camera Program, an amount of $29,400. This is a matching grant, one-to-one, and the matching funds can be taken care of in kind. And we've already identified a plan to meet that match. UCSO currently uses, I got to get this right, Motorola cameras. Motorola bought out a company called WatchGuard. And so if I say the term "WatchGuard," I'm actually referring to Motorola now. We use the Motorola system. We have the infrastructure in place. As far as the grant is concerned, we did have to go out and get additional quotes. So I did some research into three other camera systems. And through that research, it still made sense because we have the existing infrastructure in place that it's most beneficial to stay with the Motorola camera systems. So the quote before you is for 30 of the newest model V700 Motorola cameras. This will allow us to outfit our entire patrol division as well as our reserves and also take some of the existing cameras that we have and move them into the jail for the body warm program that we're running up in the jail. The quote also includes some needed accessories, such as our camera mounts, video transfer stations, which is where the cameras get docked and the video gets uploaded. And so you'll see that their requested purchase exceeds the grant amount by a few thousand dollars. And so that exceeded amount is going to get applied to our matching funds portion of the grant. So we request approval for the purchase of the cameras and equipment quoted in the amount of $32,675. And with that, I stand for questions.
A couple of questions, Josh. One, from just doing the math, I think that leaves you with like 16 cameras or 14 cameras that will not be, or will all those move to jail? Will they all be used or will you have some reserved cameras?
I'll have a couple of reserved cameras. We're anticipating some growth. And so that's part of the reason that we wanted to have a few extras is anticipated growth. As well as if one breaks, I've got some that I can just hand out while we do repairs.
I think that's a good idea on that part. The part I'm confused about, I think that's great. You said it's a one-to-one grant. So are you saying that we need to match $29,400?
Yes. But like I said, we can do that with in-kind funds. So for instance, our records clerks, they average right now about 40 hours a month processing video. We get a lot of video requests from the DA's office, from various entities, from the public. And so their wages can be applied to the grant match as an in-kind match. And so their wages alone is probably going to help us to meet that.
Gotcha.
We've got a two-year window to meet that. I should have mentioned that. This is a two-year grant. So I've got two years to meet that. So we don't have to match that today. We can do it over the two-year period. And so we're going to be well off for that.
And in-kind is great for 100% of it?
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I got a tour earlier on and very much appreciated. So with that, I move to approve the purchase installation of Space Saber, or I'm sorry. I move to approve the purchase from Motorola Solutions as quoted in the amount of $32,675.
Second?
Okay, first approved and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Sheriff's Evidence Vault.
All right. So before you Commissioners, is a request to purchase some locking doors for our evidence vault. To give you a background, UCSO's evidence vault, which is located in our main office here in Pendleton, is over 20 years old. It has not been modified since the building was constructed, which I think was in 2000 or thereabouts. And since that time, industry standards have changed and UCSO is also at the same time moving toward accreditation. So to meet those industry standards and meet the accreditation standards, we're looking to do some upgrades. Most notably is that within the vault, even though the vault is our most secure area, only two people have direct access to the vault, that being our evidence deputy and the sheriff. So even though it's already one of the most secured places in the facility, inside accreditation and industry standards are requiring that we take further steps to separate certain items, most notably guns, drugs, and money. They need to be locked within the vault and separated. And so this project is for us to add the locking doors within the vault so that we meet those industry standards. UCSO, we've researched our options to modify the current storage shelves. The company that made them and installed them 20 years ago doesn't exist anymore. And so we found this company, Space Saber Specialists, that they manufacture very similar shelving products. And they said that they can do the work, they're really the sole source that we could find to do this work. And so they quoted this out at $12,985. In addition, I became aware that City County Insurance has a grant program to help communities to do this kind of work. They've got several grant programs, but this one specifically to deal with police agencies upgrading their evidence room or their property handling. It's important to note that the property room is probably one of the highest liability areas that we have. When we take property in, we are on the hook for evidence, for the value of it. And so there is a high liability with it. And CIS recognizes that, which is part of the reason that they have this grant funding available. And they've given us $5,000 to help offset the cost for this upgrade. So I request the approval of the purchase and installation of the Space Saber locking doors for the cost of $12,958. I also would like to point out real quick that Commissioner Timmons, as she said, came out and did a tour. We were happy to have her. And anytime you guys want a tour of our facility, please come find us. But it was wonderful to show her the work that goes on down there because our evidence deputy, Stephen Westfall, he's kind of a one-man show down in the property room. There are no windows in this room. And he does an amazing job, but there's a lot of work down there. We were glad to be able to share that work. So if you have any questions?
During the reconstruction and remodeling Stafford, did that evidence room get upgraded?
That evidence room has not been upgraded. That one's a little bit different. That's our long-term storage for major cases. It is in the works to get an upgrade. But our focus right now is the Pendleton office and getting that one up to speed. And then we'll be moving over to the Stafford Hansel.
So will these lockers basically go where the ones now are? Or is it a reconfiguration to?
It's a modification. So the existing shelving is there and these locking doors are going to be added to it, added to the existing shelving.
So you're still going to use the shelving that you did?
Yes.
That's there now?
Yes.
Okay. Because if there is space for that, that's what I was curious.
Yeah.
I think there's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to point out, I think the lieutenant said it was built in 2000. I think it was actually built in 1998.
Yeah, I couldn't remember. It was right around then. Yeah.
I can't correct either of them.
I think there's, we need to make a change on the action requested. I think it's 12,958 or 58?
I'm sorry. It is 12,958. So it looks like on the background side, I transposed some numbers. The action requested has the correct amount, the 12,958. Yeah.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the evidence shelving for $12,958.
Second? It's been approved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, the next item, Stafford Hansel generator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Yumitila County. The first thing I have for you is for the transfer switch controls for the Stafford Hansel generator. They have failed and this is to replace them. We only have one option for those and it's Power Systems West. Right now, we're having to manually turn the generator on if we lose power. So it's kind of a big deal. So the request is for $10,266.70.
How often does that happen?
Not very often. This is the first work we've done on that type of thing, on that generator since the building, so 2006.
How often do you start the generator?
The generator automatically cycles once a month. And then every time the power goes out, it comes on.
So will this assist in the automatic recycling?
Yes. Yeah, so right now I'm having to go out and manually.
Start it every time?
Start it. Yeah, so.
Any issues with the generator?
No. No, that one's good.
I'd move approval for expensive $10,266.70 power systems for controller replacement.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Mark, next one?
This one is for the electrical work for the Veterans and Juve Office at Juve. This included the plugs and lighting to Double S Electric for $6,758.92.
All I got to do is say, as always, your staff, and you guys did an incredible job on that remodeling.
Thank you.
You guys just did a great job. And thanks again for the help on the move too.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have. I'd move for approval of payment of $6,758.92 to Double S Electric.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mark, Justice Center controls.
So this is one we went out for bid on. I would like to not accept this bid and go back out. I got, I received a call on the day the bids were due from another company that would like to bid. Since we only got one, I felt like that was a good option to get a second bid. So I'd like to go back out for RFP for the Justice controls.
And I hope some kind of different, different kind of bid.
Me too.
Holy cow.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a shocker. I was expecting 180 to 200.
You shoot your whole facilities maintenance budget in one shot. Do we need to take action? I move that we reject this bid and move forward with reopening the bidding process.
Second? Any comments? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guardian Care Facility Roof.
Yeah, so this, we went out for RFP for bids for the roof. We received two bids, one from CNC Construction Services for $26,900 and one for Palmer Roofing for $20,113. And I would like to move forward with the Palmer for $20,113.
Any discussion?
Real quick question. Do they have to pay prevailing wage?
No, less than $50,000.
Gotcha. I would move approval to move forward with the Guardian Care Roof to Palmer Roofing for $20,113.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Mark.
Next item, Elections Payable.
Morning Commissioners. Dan, I'm with Administrative Services. And before you is a, it's a routine bill for buying envelopes for the elections. And it's budgeted, it's just over 5,000. It requires permission from you for the payable. It's $8,668 with Simveo, our envelope printing company.
I have a question, Dan. How many of these envelopes do you get back?
How many of these envelopes do I get back?
Yeah.
On the election, you know, primary, probably 40, 50% coming up. You know, it's presidential primary, but you know, depends how the race is going to go. And as it's looking right now, there might not be as much excitement for the primary. And the presidential, I'm going to be in the 70s. I'd like to hit 80, but you know, 70% probably. But some of our other elections, if it's an off-year, I might not even make 20%, you know, so. Out of 50,000, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're pretty optimistic.
Yeah, I know. Okay, I move to approve and assign the attached payable to Sen. Sen. In the amount of $8,668.
Second?
Great. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, I couldn't find it.
Okay, traffic purchase? Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Good morning Commissioners. Tom Fellowes, Public Works Director. So what we brought before the board today is the purchase of a new tractor for Harris Park. Over the past number of years, we've made a vast number of improvements and we always try to keep our fleet up in good operational order. Certainly try to roll it over before the value gets down to the point where we can't, where the trade-in doesn't give us any, any real value. So we went out for two requests on this. Both of them are Sourcewell contract requests. Agri Services over in Walla Walla gave us a price of $38,885.80 with an $8,200 trade-in, excuse me, for a total of $30,685.80. RDO gave us a comparable machine fully equipped the way we requested for $43,444.86 with a $7,000 trade-in, which came to $36,444.86. The recommendation of our department is to go with the Agri Service machine from Walla Walla for the $30,685.08.
So any comments?
Pretty thorough, Pinky. I would move for approval, purchase a MMS tractor for Harris Park with $30,685.80.
Second? Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Wolf Deprivation Prevention Payables.
This is coming before the board for the annual payments to the producers. This is for incurred expense for deterrence for the 2023. The committee, Wolf Deprivation Advisory Committee, may review these and recommend a payment. And those are before the board for approval.
Any questions or comments?
I'd move for approval or to adopt. I'd move for approval or to adopt order BCC 2024-029.
Second. Okay, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Doug. Red Cross Proclamation.
This proclamation is going to be before the board. I think it's been at least two years this proclamation has been adopted to declare March as Red Cross Month. It's before the board again this year for consideration to declare March 2024 Red Cross Month.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Being a regular blood donor, I would proudly endorse this proclamation and move to adopt BCC 2024-30.
Second. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next one, Property Purchase.
Okay, this matter is going to be before the board. A property has been identified as a potential new site for the fair office. What's before the board is to authorize a commissioner to proceed with negotiations for the purchase of the property. If the negotiations are successful, then it'd come back for formal approval, but this would authorize the negotiation and signing of any documents for the purchase.
I move for approval of to move forward with this property negotiation.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a quick question on that. So this isn't to purchase the property today, right? It's just to make an offer or go forward with that?
That's correct, to basically negotiate through offer to potential sale, but the actual sale would come back before the board for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Commissioner Assignments.
The Commissioner Liaison Assignments for 2024 are before the board for approval. These are basically the same as last year with just some minor movements due to the rotations of the chair.
Okay, after I ask this question, what are the movements?
Basically, at this point, the only one that rotates is legal. Other than that, now, the staff is assigned to one particular commissioner rather than rotate.
So legal always goes to the chairman?
Yes.
Of the board, is that right?
Yes.
Or chairwoman.
Chairwoman, okay. All right.
It used to be all staff did, but now it's changed.
Okay. Are there any comments?
I move for approval of the Commissioner Liaison Assignments for 2024.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Pipeline, Phase Three Contract.
Okay, this relates to the Central Pipeline Project. There are three phases to the project. The first phase is nearing completion. This is to get water to the edge of the depot property. Phase two will get it onto the property, depot property, to the point of the recharge project, and then phase three is the actual recharge project. Phases one and two have already been approved and contracted for construction. This is phase three, what's before the board for construction. The proposal is to contract with the current contractor, Tappany, to complete the remainder of the project, and hopefully this.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, hopefully then this construction will just continue and flow smoothly.
Okay.
I would actually move to adopt BCC 2024-028.
All seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? I have a question. You said we're getting close to the end of phase one?
Yes.
So how long do you expect phase two and then phase three? Do you have any idea?
No, phase two is still dependent on some of the approvals from the Corps, and so that timeframe, we're quite sure, but hopefully in the next few months, that can be, and once it starts, I think they're thinking a matter of few months.
Okay, and then phase three will be?
Following that.
Probably fairly soon after that. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I think we've come to the end of our list. Is there any good for the order? John?
I am good, thank you.
I have nothing.
Okay, it's the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone.